Follow meeting order. We'll start with the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mic up. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Public forum, you got anything? Presentations?
None.
Next, number six, the consent agenda. Anyone have anything that they want pulled?
I did have a question though. Can I say? The library media specialist, how many, is that a full-time position?
It will be full-time. It is starting in mid-year, so it's pro-rated.
Oh, that's why it looks like, okay.
Yeah, and so we're looking at May 1 start date.
Okay.
Plus, we have extended time in the summer and those type of things.
Okay, I seen that. I just was confused about.
We still write it like a full-year contract, but it is pro-rated out.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Financials. We're missing Jackie tonight, so if we have any questions.
I'll field them and do my best, or.
We'll get an answer.
Get an answer for you if you have any questions on anything.
Review budget year-to-date.
Budget year-to-date is about where it was at last year. I would guess that snow removal this year is going to be way above what we, or maybe Jackie budgets this much every year and we save, but snow removal will be pretty steep, but Mark said that we won't be doing much more snow removal this year. Is it done now?
He promised.
Mark? Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. This does not require action.
Nope.
Treasurers' report for January.
Again, that just shows our cash on hand and where we're at with our current finances.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report for January?
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Any questions on the bills for February? Can I get a motion to approve the regular bills for February?
So moved.
Second.
Got it, Deb?
Yes.
Amy.
Amy.
All those in favor approving the bills for February signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. High school activity bills for February. Same thing. Any questions on the high school activity bills for February? Can I get a motion to approve the February?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the high school activity bills for February. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Treasurers' report for elementary building bond.
It's almost gone.
Jackie, looks like Jackie has found the last $33.24 and has zeroed it out, so I think this will be the final.
Final.
On the project, so. It's gone. It's been used.
Good deal.
Yep.
Can I?
Needs you.
Yeah, approval right now. Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the elementary building bond?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report for the elementary building bond. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Number eight, board forum information. 8.1 Board Reports and Updates.
When do you do the negotiations training?
Tomorrow.
Is that in March? Oh, okay.
Tomorrow night and then the following Tuesday.
We were going to go to the negotiations, but it got blizzarded out, so I think March, and then now you probably will do online also.
Yeah, and I got them in my calendar, but I don't have, I don't know the dates off the top of my head.
Thursday, Wednesday.
Minnesota School Board Association has negotiations trainings for school board members, so I think all negotiators are planning to take part in that, just for updates on how things will, just for going into this year's negotiations.
So they're creating your self-plan on going to St. Cloud.
We're going to try to go in-person, yep, if weather allows. Otherwise, we'll be doing it online also, so. We didn't have any other committees here this. Did we?
I feel like we met, but yeah, was that this, was it this month or last month?
Yeah, it's just. What was discussed with that?
I'm not saying. I think we were discussing.
What can you share?
We were discussing the, kind of the process for bringing in some of the companies that could help us.
Yes, yes, thank you.
With the bond proceeds, and then I think we looked over some of the administrative recommendations for summer projects and stuff, and I think we're all online with those, so.
We're going to meet with the different, like contractors, with like 13th and 14th?
March 13th and 14th are scheduled to have them come in and the board, the full board.
This is all familiar to me now. It's all coming back. That sounds like a long time ago.
Maybe it was, it's all these snowstorms.
Yes, it was, yeah.
January that would've been.
I think calendar was supposed to be, but that got canceled.
Yeah, no, that's like next week, right? Yeah, eighth, yes.
So. The weather has wreaked havoc with.
It feels like it was for a while.
It really has.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to administrators' report. Superintendents and board report.
Enrollment was up 10 this month, so we're back to where we were at the beginning of the year, so it's fluctuated. Just legislatively, there's a lot going on in the legislature with positive funding news that may happen or may not happen, I don't know. A lot of policy issues and some things that probably we're not real fond of, and I know that MSBA and MRAA have been lobbying and keeping us informed. I don't know if any of you get on any of those, but Friday morning, there is a MSBA legislative update at 9:00 a.m., so if you do want to kind of get clued in, they send that out and you can listen to that, but they do a pretty good job of kind of giving you an idea of where things are at. State budget forecast is still at about 17 billion, so I know that the schools have really been pushing to put money on the formula and not all these categorical things that start to kind of water down what that means for us out here. The formula is king, and that's where we want the funds to go, if possible, so. But there are some other things you've probably heard, like the lunch, free lunch for students, that that's in its own bill and kind of been through the House and probably will get done. What that all means, not really sure yet, haven't been able to get updates. I know superintendents were also supposed to go down to the legislature and meet with the legislators, and that got canceled because of the weather, so March, we're hoping to get down there, but we do, I would like to sit down with them and kind of give some perspectives on how things impact us out here, so. But I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, or. And the other thing, just update on our weather closings. We've used our five e-learning days. We have four make-up days. We've already made up the January date. We made up February President's Day. We're slated to make up March 19th and again April 6th. Last Friday, we did another e-learning day online. The students and the teachers still had classes, but we don't claim that as a student day with the state, so that's where 174 is now 173. So we're counting it as a contract day for teachers. We kind of said that would be the better way to do it. I know there was maybe some confusion with the title "Online" and "e-learning," and people are concerned about that, but I've explained, we talked about it as a board in December, and felt like we can go a little bit above and have those extra e-learning days. Right now, I would say we could probably do up to three or four more, and then after that, we'll have to start making decisions about our early dismissals and how we, when we bring people back and those types of things, so. That's what I kind of mentioned earlier this winter, is this could be a bad one, and we may need to be a little fluid with how we plan it, but that's kind of where we're at right now, so.
I know I've been asked, why do we go over by nine days? You know, the state says 165 and we do 174. Why? I was just telling them, it's probably because of snow make-up days or things like that, if it's bad, but, I mean, what is the real reason?
That was what it was when I started here, and it's been that way probably for a long time. A lot of that's based on your teacher contract, which ours is 181 teacher contract days, of which, how many are staff development? How many are student days? A lot of schools do have, I mean, you have schools with 175 days, you have schools with 170 days, it's just, there's no uniformity. The state doesn't require, they let local districts have control of that, so, and we have our calendar that we look at, and if that's something people want to change, the district has the right to set those, but I would, the teacher contract of 181 days is, plays into some of that also, so.
When I asked a couple other schools, neighboring schools, and they also have more, they actually are right around where we are too. So, I mean, it's not like we're the only district that's over nine days, because I had some people asking me also. Yeah. You know.
A lot of it could be with the weather, building it in. Since I've been in education, they've always been.
I would just guess that, you know, this, I don't know the reason, but I would guess it's flexibility during the winter months.
Right.
Yep.
So if we had to, we could actually forgive up to nine days if we absolutely had to? I mean, is that something that we could do, like?
Sure. Yep.
May I add, you know, the 165 days is the minimum requirement, and in order for our students to effectively gain the learning they need in the time that we have, we need all 174 of those days.
As much as we can.
As much as we can within those 174, but the state sets the minimum, and if we want our students to have better than minimum, we have to plan for better than minimum in the number of school days.
And the minimum that they set is, really doesn't have, I don't know if it has anything to do with, that's the funding piece. If you go below that, that's, you get your 1.0 WADOM, your weighted average daily membership, and each student is, you know, there's a per pupil unit. When you start falling below that, they then prorate you as to where that's at, so.
I thought the letter that Ms. Morvitz sent out was very good and explained it really well for parents, so I appreciated that.
Okay.
It was helpful.
I don't have elementary.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of an update of where we're at with our weather and, we're done, right?
According to Mark.
Get that in the minutes. So, but I guess that's what I've got right now. I don't know if everybody has any other questions on anything.
All right. All right, moving on to 9.2, principals' board report. Whoever wants to go first?
I got it. Well, good evening. A few items tonight. First of all, it's a time of year where we go through our student registration. We're always planning for the next year, and it's always kind of weird because you're still, we start doing this while we're still in first semester, but we're to the point where we'll do our incoming ninth grade, and we're going to do that on March 13th. It's a little tricky this year because driver's ed is going at the same time, so we typically use the same facility, but I've worked with Mr. Zolner, and we've got some things figured out on the timing of that, but we'll invite all our ninth grade, incoming ninth grade parents and students for that time. Couple of things to be thinking about. Last summer, we had some training done with a couple of our teachers on a construction geometry class. That is something that we're advocating for and trying to put into place. So that would be, obviously for all ninth grade students, it is open to any incoming ninth grader to choose to take. It's what we're planning, it would look like first period of the day. Right now, we're hoping to use the college, sorry, use the college facility and hoping for a good number of students, and it would take two teachers right now. Mrs. Thompson teaches geometry and Mr. Deflis does construction, and so they would team teach a number of students and kind of work through the concepts, so they would get their geometry principles and also build things based on those principles. So we're really excited to see how that can come together, but that'll be a big, a big piece of what we're talking to our students about.
So, so as many that want to do it in ninth grade can? You'll just add classes, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It is a challenge to schedule, I will say that, but we've had, we've had good conversations. I've kind of laid some things out on what our schedule can look like. I do, I do think, you know, on the high end, 35 to 40 is probably where we want to be in year one. You know, and it does take resources, because you're building stuff, so it's, it can be cost, it has a cost to it that we're not quite used to, but I do think it has a lot of value, and we want to get some things going here in year one.
So you can have a bus, bus then? Most freshmen can't drive.
Yes.
[laughing].
Yep, planning on putting that together, so.
Maybe the activity bus will be here.
So.
Yeah.
So that's the biggest thing. We are also looking at a financial literacy, personal finance. It's a class we've taught with, with a lot of our students before. This year, we did with a lot of our freshmen, and that's something that I would like to see all our freshmen take as kind of that incoming first year to build some financial literacy, and then as we go through their high school career, especially as juniors, they get another dose of it specifically with our economics and personal finance, so that'll be a part of the registration process for our freshman group, so. So that's what we have going on there. If you go around to high school, it's time of year where things are pretty busy. This week, we'll do a send-off for our three wrestlers that made it to state, so we'll do that on Wednesday. Last week, we had gymnastics. I hate just saying a few because I know I'm going to miss, but we got done with FFA Week. We got to do our, Ms. Rush had breakfast this morning, and kids were making, making their pancakes and such. Robotics is going to, one of their first ones, I can't remember if this one's Duluth or Duluth, so that's, they leave Wednesday. Jazz band had a performance this morning. We've got our basketball teams are rolling, so there's a lot going. It's usually one of the funner times of the year, so, just so you're aware of all the things going on, and like I said, I'm sure I missed something, but a couple other things, we've been talking about a portrait of a graduate at the high school and what we've been working on as part of our early release time this year, and really trying to drill down on our district goals, but also get some good feedback from our staff, from our students. On Wednesday, we invited some of our community members, business owners, to come in and also give us some feedback, so we'll be doing that in here at 3:00 on Wednesday. You're welcome to come if you want to sit in and hear and/or be a part of the conversation, so it's hopefully not me talking a lot and other people just sharing their thoughts and ideas and what they want out of our young people. So, that's this Wednesday, 3:00. Other things that we're doing during our early release time, we're continuing to focus on grading practices and improving those, what we've done with our middle level, we're dealing with our high school, so we're continuing to work on that area of our instructional practice. And then Mr. Henderson was talking about the legislative process, and I just want to throw out that principals rarely get a legislative voice, but I'm a part of the state board for our principals' organization, and I got to say, our new commissioner, Willie Jett, has been very open to listening to principals. I've been on a few of the webinars or Zoom meetings and been able to advocate for the things that principals feel are really important, so it's encouraging that they're actually listening, and they've done follow-ups with us as a principal organization. One of the huge things that we're talking about is non-exclusionary discipline, and really what that means is, how do we treat kids instead of just suspending them? How do we treat and work with them to keep them in school more often than not? So, that's a big topic for us, and I just think it's worth, we're saying that we finally get a little bit of voice as principals and they're at least listening to us, so. That's my report, unless you have questions for me.
I seen the letter that went out to the local community business members. It was, looked really good. My boss was really impressed, so he thought it was good.
Hope he comes.
He's coming. He has said he was coming.
Cool.
But I thought it was, it was, it's a good idea. I mean, those are the people that are going to be hiring people, so.
Exactly.
Good evening. February is I Love to Read Month, and so we had a team of teachers that came together and planned a whole bunch of fun activities. So we had our kickoff assembly back at the start of February. We got all of the grades together, and we talked about all the fun activities that we had. So a few things that we had, we had an author come visit, Amanda Radke from South Dakota. She came and read. She had some really cool books. The kids were excited about that. We had an all-day reading event on the 8th of February, so the kids, they read all day long. Fun events, the teachers had really cool reading things that they got to do, bring in a, you know, comfy clothes, that sort of stuff. We had the older kids read to younger kids, so we paired up some of the older kids to read to the younger kids. They did a bookmark exchange too, they created that for each other. We're doing a book bingo, so each kid got a bingo card and different activities throughout there, and they could get a bingo, and then they can go for blackout. So our closing ceremony is tomorrow, and we're going to celebrate the kids that received blackouts, and we've got quite a list of kids that are doing that. One of the big pieces that we did is footprints, so kids could earn footprints in junior kindergarten, kindergarten, and first grade. For every book that they read, they get one footprint. In second grade, for every 15 minutes they read, they get a footprint. In third grade, every 20 minutes equals a footprint. Fourth grade, every 25 minutes, and then fifth grade, every 30 minutes. I had Heidi, our secretary, add them all up. Preschool, so even preschool is included in this, preschool, they, out of all of the preschool, 168 books. Junior kindergarten and kindergarten, 360 books. First grade, they had 393 footprints, which equals, let's see, oh, what's books, sorry. Second grade, they had 507 footprints, which equals 7,605 minutes read in the second grade. Third grade, they had 593 footprints, which equals 11,860 minutes read. Fourth grade had 1,059 footprints, and they had 26,475 minutes read in a month. And fifth grade, they had 620 footprints, which equals 18,600 minutes. It's impressive. I highly recommend you guys going to the elementary because you can see the footprints. The end goal was to walk to the library. We had four grades that made it, so first grade, second grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade all got to the library. It is so cool. You should go check out and all of the reading that was celebrated, which is awesome. So we had a fun month, a lot of dress-up days that were included in there, and the kids just had fun, just celebrating reading with all of that. We have terrific kid program coming up on this March 3rd. We have preschool screening and kindergarten roundup coming in March, and I'll give you more details at the next board meeting on everything with that, but those are just some things that we had going on for the month of February. It was just fun to celebrate kids, so we'll have our closing ceremony tomorrow morning.
Wow.
Yeah, I should add up all of these minutes, but that's an impressive amount of minutes that these kids are reading.
I have a daughter who's at home right now frantically trying to get a blackout.
[laughing].
Searching every book to see if it fits the criteria, so I just went to our house. They were very engaged, and they were really excited about it, I think all the kids were, so.
Good, that's good. Yeah, we had a lot of fun with it.
You had a lot of guest readers?
Oh, guest readers, mystery guest readers. You came, right, Amy?
I did, I gave two classes. It was all fun.
Yes, we had mystery readers. I read to the kids on Valentine's Day, so I spent my whole day just, that's the one thing I missed about from being a teacher, was reading to the kids. We just, we just had fun and celebrated reading, and kids were sharing their books that they were reading with me and their favorite books, and just started good conversation, something to celebrate.
It's fun to do it.
Oh, absolutely, yep, and, yeah. Questions?
Very good, thank you. Director of CTL and Community Education, Mel.
Good evening, everyone. As I talked about last month, testing season is gearing up. Last week, I registered 67 Pipestone Area School juniors for our district ACT test that we will be taking on April 4th. We're planning on having it at the Armory again, that worked really well last year. So, and that is an increase over previous years. We've had between 40 and 55 test takers, but all 67 of those students are juniors, so that's pretty amazing. I'm very pumped for them. MCA test prep is continuing. Our e-learning days last week were a good time to create test sessions. The MCA reading test is on the days of April 24th through the 28th. MCA math is May 1st through the 5th, and then MCA science is May 8th through the 12th. So please note that we are on the very tail end of the testing window, and I do that purposefully because our teachers request that, so that we can get as much learning in before the test as possible, but know that there is zero wiggle room, because the last day that we can take the MCA reading or the math test is May 5th. So, we're cutting her close, and the last day we can take the science test is May 12th. So, we are, hopefully, we are all done with all weather by that moment in time, that we can move forward on these days and make sure that things happen. Letters training update, our letter, we're in Unit 2 right now with our elementary letters training. On April, or excuse me, on February 15th, we had our Unit 2 Part 1 training for the live PD, the three-hour PD, and then this Wednesday is Part 2 of Unit 2 for the second three hours of our live training. Both are held from 2:15 until 5:15, and staff will be compensated for that timeout aside of the contract that time, and then all other time on their June paycheck. Mrs. Morvitz and I prepped our Unit 2 Letters check-in meeting with each grade level and content area, and those will take place March 6th through the 14th, so they will have had their live training by that moment in time, and they'll be about halfway through their Unit 2 learning on their own. I also have been participating in the MAS A Women's Leadership Network. The most recent one was a leadership panel of female superintendents in Minnesota discussing the benefits that women bring to leadership, as well as the barriers that females bring to leadership, and it is a wonderful opportunity to be able to be with women leaders across the state. People in my role, assistant superintendent, superintendents, principals have also been invited, so it's a wonderful learning opportunity and networking session. For community education, it's going to take a little bit to get the community re-engaged again. I had to cancel my first class, which, you know, I take personally, but it's. I had to cancel my first class, which, you know, I take personally, but it's, I can't take it personally. It's going to just take a, a hot minute here for people to get realizing that, hey, we have these opportunities, and if we don't use them, they go away, so.
I feel like winter's hard too.
And winter is hard.
Especially if you've had so much.
Yep, winter is harder, but I am currently working on the offerings for April, May, and June, which will come out mid-March, hopefully sooner rather than later, but I'm shooting for mid-March. Yeah, it, it's, community ed is quite the undertaking, and, and I'm still very excited about it, and it does take a lot of my time, and so when, when we had a couple of those snow days last week, I'm like, thank you, we're contesting, so just got to take it as it comes, and do you have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Move on to number eleven, Board Action. Eleven point one, resolution approving gifts to the school. Eleven point one includes Arrow Booster Club donating thirty-eight hundred sixty-six dollars and ninety cents to the wrestling, gymnastics, and boys' basketball. It also includes a hundred dollar, Christ the King, a hundred dollar donation to the wellness room. I'd like to thank these, for these donations. We do need a motion to approve these donations. I have a motion, and a second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Eleven point two, resolution approving gifts to high school activities. I'm not going to read all these off, it's a pretty impressive list. There's thirty-two separate donations for twelve thousand three hundred dollars, all to the high school robotics team.
That's very cool.
So I'd like to thank everybody on that list for supporting our robotics team. I do need a motion approving these gifts.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the gifts to, to the district. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, eleven point three through eleven point six. Kevin, do you have anything to share in these policies?
These policies are being updated because the board chair changed in January from Jeff Botts to Brad Carson, so these policies need to have the name of that person, so recommend that you approve all four. It's a update that is required.
Any questions, discussion? Need a motion to approve these four policies, eleven point three through eleven point six.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve these policies. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Eleven point seven, approve fiscal year twenty-four achievement and integration budget.
Ms. Wellness is in charge of this, so I don't know if you have any.
This budget, we present this each year of the three years that we are eligible for achievement and integration expenditures. This year, as well as our previous years, one hundred percent of our funding goes to staffing, so this is two FTEs that cover our math specialist and our math interventionist. We also then, our math specialist spends time in Edgerton, and so part of that FTE is also paid through Edgerton's achievement and integration funding. So we, this year, our grand total, if you are looking at the cover sheet, is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, almost a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that we're able to use to have two FTEs focused on our achievement and integration goals, which are around math, increasing our math scores, as well as integration of bringing children together that are different in, in gender, race, fiscal background, all of that, and both Edgerton and us participate in the summer for a summer math-focused summer school session, and that's how Edgerton spends some of their funding to bus their kids over, so. Questions? I just need an approval because then I get to pass this on to the M D E people.
Any questions? I'll need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year twenty-four achievement and integration budget. All those in favors, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Eleven point eight, letter of resignation from Kevin Enerson Superintendent. I'd like to, well, I, I guess I'll start, you know, thanks for your time here, Kevin. You know, I've worked with you for four years on the board. I've appreciated, I've appreciated it. I think we need to, we need a motion to approve his resignation. And a second? If I can get a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the letter of resignation from Kevin Enerson Superintendent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I am with you till June thirtieth, so it's, this is a formality here, and, and I just wanted to, sometimes people think that, you know, you're just, you're done, it's not. I, I'll be with and take care of the district through the, through June, and we've got things to do, so we'll keep doing them. I would say thank you, but I'll leave the thank yous and goodbyes for June. How's that, everybody okay with that?
Perfect.
Sounds good.
Hard enough.
Eleven point nine, superintendent's search. You'll see, we have something from the MSBA. I believe that's the group that worked to get you to Recoree? Or helped with that?
They helped Recoree with that, yes.
Yes.
There are other search services, but School Exec Connect, who helped Pipestone hire me, we contacted them, but they have enough searches, and they just don't have the staff to help you.
Yeah, Deb shared the number, and I personally called Ken, and he said he would love to, but they're already stretched way too thin, and just, they don't have the capabilities to take on another client at this time.
I appreciate that.
I do appreciate that.
I do, I appreciate that.
They're not going to take us on and not give us the one things that we deserve.
Contacted a couple others, and one of them is fully retired, and they retired, retired, and don't do it anymore, and they're just, it's kind of a, MSBA's kind of the one that I, you know, if you're going to get help with it.
They've served us well in the past with.
Other things.
Yeah, I would agree. Strategy planning and guiding us.
We've worked with them in the past.
Yep.
You know, I.
No, they know, they do a lot of them, so they'll, they'll do what needs to be done and, and help you with it, so they'll sit down with you and.
So my suggestion would be we make a motion to go with MSBA for the superintendent's search, and then Deb can get ahold of them and get everything in motion for us.
Yeah.
But, that's my suggestion.
Will that start pretty immediately then? So that we can, yeah?
Yeah. It depends on if you want them to do the, like, some background, the community and the staff or students, or not. That would probably start immediately, but you guys have to decide as well, so. Focus group. So where your staff meets, they meet with your staff, and then kind of fill out what the staff wants to see, and the same thing like the students, what they like to see.
Thank you.
But that's something you might want to, you know, figure out if you do want to do that, you know, with this. And you'll see that in that all of our option allocation, you know, if you just want to involve a little bit.
And that's what we would have to decide on before we talk to them, you mean? Or, no?
Not before we talk to them, I mean, we can call them tomorrow or Kevin.
I would guess that'd be part of your discussion, so.
Right, oh, so that's what I was going to say, they'll explain to us.
They'll sit down with you and say, what do you want?
Yeah, yeah.
And what type of feedback do you want?
So they might want to meet with you at some point or actually meet with you and decide what you want.
Yeah, I, I, I think we, I think we, we vote to, we vote to go with them. We contact them and tell them that we want to, we want their services, so we get on their, on their calendar, and then they come down here and we can let them give us advice, what they think's, you know, partially.
Let them kind of take the lead, or like?
Help try to lead, yes.
I move we hire MSBA to do the super, help us with the superintendent's search.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, to go with MSBA to help with our superintendent's search. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number twelve, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I'll say no one wants to help.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.